I'll bring this meeting, the Morgan Building Committee to order. And first order of business will be to approve minutes from our prior meeting.
Motion to approve and present.
Thank you David.
Second.
Second Jeff, thank you. Any corrections? I read them, they look good to me. David?
She seems to have... Sure he hasn't died.
No one has any corrections to make, all in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Close, extensions? Motion passes, thank you. Tonight, I want to go over a couple of things that we talked about and we just have to discuss as a committee. We have Bob Lynn from Gilbane, he's going to go over our latest cost estimate. But one of the first things I wanted to talk about, we had a little bit of a discussion about this at last meeting, but I think I'd like to revisit it, and I think we might be all in agreement in regard to the maintenance building. We had discussed including $500,000 in the cost estimate for the maintenance building, in our cost estimate. After thinking about it, having some discussions with Willie and I think John was in agreement to this, it would make more sense for the town to take on that responsibility and build the maintenance building.
If it is for all the schools.
Right, it's for all the schools. And outside of this building project, there's a, we wouldn't have to pay prevailing rate wages on a job of that size. And it would probably cost a lot less for the town to build that maintenance facility outside of this building project.
What's the prevailing rate number now, Dave?
Those are the four men of first grade, we could probably do that. Big difference.
So unless anybody has any objections to that, I ask Bob Lynn not to include that in the cost estimate. We are going to have to make everyone at the town level aware of the fact that a maintenance building will have to be built at some point.
Now what's the maintenance at the door right now?
That Willie was talking about. Parking wreck related.
Is it?
Well, I think Public Works predominantly uses it, but...
Isn't there vehicles in there? Or AV vehicles?
AV. But predominantly field maintenance equipment.
Maybe you can add on to that instead of a whole new structure.
And that keeps it on a school location so that they're close to one of the buildings that they're going to be working in.
And two, if this doesn't matter.
Correct. So for an agreement, I'll let Bob now speak a little bit to the new revised cost estimate that we have. If anybody has any questions, we can discuss them right now, otherwise this should be final, we'll move over with it.
As Jerry indicated, this is probably the final version with just three or four edits from what you've seen last. And those are, number one, what Jerry just spoke about, the maintenance building is going to be moved from this page. It was never actually included in the total, where it's shown separately on the side of the book, on the bottom of the page on previous estimates, it's now going to move. In terms of the changes to the actual estimate for Morgan School, if you look down to site acquisition line in the other cost group on this cover page, site acquisition is now defined as $2 million, which I believe is the approximate appraisal. There's a new line below it, business relocation costs at 1.7 million. So the total of those two lines, 3.7 is what you saw before. They're just broken apart now in terms of what the purchase price would be and the relocation cost of the business would be. Additionally, the next line down, house acquisition, is the purchase price of the house that sits in the middle of the property currently at $280,000. Lastly, there was a small change in the water line extension number, dropping from $500,000 to $400,000. $100,000 in savings there on the trade cost above. So those are the few minor edits that have been made. The now new bottom line is 64.75 rounded up, million dollars. Any questions on that? Okay. Jumping to page two, this is something you haven't seen before. This is the division of the total project cost between the town and the state. The state has three categories of costs: eligible for reimbursement, limited eligible for reimbursement. Those are basically athletic facilities and seating in a gym. And then costs that are ineligible for reimbursement. So the vast majority of the costs are eligible for reimbursement from the state. Limited eligible, as I mentioned, would be the athletic fields and then seating in the gym. And ineligible costs are any costs that are incurred that are off the property, outside the property boundary. So off the property, or off the site of the project. And that would be utility extensions, so water line extension, the gas line extension, any of those costs that are outside the boundary. Also, what would be ineligible is any cost paid purchased property that's above and beyond the higher of two appraisals. And although there would be some reimbursement for moving the business, repaying the business under state statute, I don't know that that would extend all the way to the main site. So a good chunk of that is being carried as an ineligible cost for reimbursement. So having said that, the reimbursement rate currently this year for Clinton on the state website is 36%. There's a 15% state, excuse me, space penalty, because the project is 135,000 square feet net. And the state's allowable space standard is 115,000, so 20,000 feet extra, primarily as a section gym of the oversized area. Yield the 15% space penalty. So in each of those three categories then, there's a computation for the state's share and city's share, town's share. In this case, the totals then become the state would reimburse Clinton for over $19 million of the total project cost. And Clinton would carry approximately 45 and a half million of the 64 cost million of the project. So although the town is required by the state to approve the total project costs, you only have to bond to the local share of the state reimbursement base.
Can we get down to 20 again, dear? That's how you did that?
Yeah.
I'll have to work out it a little bit longer.
Do you recommend that we got this, it'll be an owner's record? Should we have an owner's record? Is it in any of these numbers?
No, there's no owner's record in these numbers, it's all on one for mechanical systems.
What's that?
I thought you had one for mechanical systems in there. Something to add. We have commission. Commissioning is a third-party service that's very popular in the past five to 10 years. It's an entity, a professional service provider that is hired directly by the owner to oversee both the designer and the contractors in terms of designing the systems, to make sure they're commissionable, installation of the systems, to make sure they're all put in place the way the designer intended and the contract documents call for it. And then start up an operation of those systems to verify that in fact they function as intended before they're turned over to the town. The value of a commissioning agent is very often returned multiple fold in ensuring that the systems do what they're supposed to do, reduction in change orders on mechanisms, mechanical systems, which today are the most complicated part of the building. And ensures you get the energy conservation or energy efficiencies that the systems were intended to provide. And reduction in callbacks and trouble with issues with those systems after you occupy the building. That is true, owner's record, it's not... It's not in this, no. This is strictly the project cost with the traditional architect design team and all of his subconsulting engineers and the construction manager who built the project.
What do you think about owner's record?
The process of the school construction grant system is fairly complicated. If there's no one in town that can be the interface between Clinton and the Muro School facilities, it's a good idea. It's not necessary. That is what I do, that's my day job if you will. And no aim, it's no aim in a very large, very complex program. But we still recommend it.
I have a question on ineligible costs. Can you, now, $2 million? And what did that include again, Bob? Because we were talking about bringing utilities to the site.
Yeah, it's any work that's off the property. So any utility extensions that have to be made to the property. Traffic signal, if there's one that's going to be required. And in this case, I'm carrying what I think would be a significant portion of the business relocation costs. Because I doubt the state's going to reverse fall on it. It's hard to tell now how much they will.
Until you reply.
So you have a state like this.
And that just goes by the appraisal of what the land is?
Well, that's something else. The purchase of the property, the state will reimburse to the higher of two appraisals. So if the negotiation of purchase of property is above that, any amount that's above is ineligible. If you pay to the higher of the two appraisals, you're fine. It's fully, in other words, it's fully eligible for relocation. But the property relocation costs, because they're so significant, because this is an operating business, a nursery, it's not a lot of equipment to be moved, the relocation costs are fairly high.
I mean, did they put a specific number on relocation?
Well, the appraised value of the land, we actually had an appraisal done of the land and that came in at $2 million. So that was where we started, and that's why we broke it down as $2 million, which was the purchase price for the land. And then the additional monies for relocating costs.
Because none of that stuff stays, so not like a house on there, you would say that was part of the property, right?
No, it's probably going to be demolished, but the relocation costs are for the nurseries to rebuild those.
Part of that property. You know how, well, I guess in this case, I'm not sure how it would work, but if there were a house on the property, you know, that would be added to the value of that piece of property. With the state, you're not taking the house with you. So I do with that, is there ways to, when you're talking with the state, to work numbers that you don't have to put a whole 1-7 in there? Is what I'm saying.
Remember, better to put it into, because it's unlikely it will appraise it nominally to, and that gives us a back reason.
No, we want as much of that 1-7 in that property value. You know what I'm saying? Because then they're going to reimburse for as much as a million or whatever it was, or that piece of property for it, so. I didn't know. The seller has to provide documentation to his real, true cost to relocate his equipment and his operation. And then under a whole separate set of statutes of the state that deal with reimbursement for relocation, other than school construction grants, outside of school construction grants, there are methodologies to compute that. I have not encountered relocation costs this high. We've relocated nightclubs and tire dealerships and things like that, where relocation is $100,000 to $200,000. Those costs are relative, this is pretty significant.
Right now, the way it is in our cost estimate is $2 million for the land and 1.7 for relocation. And you still have to get a second appraisal.
Yes.
You know what my question is now? The second appraisal comes in at 2.2 or 2.3 million dollars.
For the state?
You flip it back the other way?
Yeah, yeah. But there's a question, I put in the cart before the horse. Appraisals have to be within six months of the date that the state is going to come down and look at the property to approve it for the site, for the project. Or the state won't come down and look at the site until this is approved project. So the project has to be approved. And then you file the documents called an EBO fix, which asks the state to come down and approve the site for the school. And so the appraisals have to be within six months of that point. You can go get a second appraisal now, but they'll have to be updated.
It will have to be updated once, because that process will take place between June 30th, 2012 and June 30th, 2013. Right, because that, because we'll be filing that paperwork with the state by June 30th of this year.
Of this year, that's correct.
So the appraisal probably should be done after that.
Well, the state won't approve it until June 2013. At that point, at that point in time, you can file for approval of the site. And the appraisals would want to be within six months of that point in time.
Christmas of 2013. Be a while off. The good news is, property values are escalating.
Probably get a higher appraisal, maybe more reimbursement for the site acquisition. Approximately a year from now is when you want your two percent. And then part of the ineligible costs, you figured, now, then we were looking at bringing that water main in over over the border of town property. So the water line part of the ineligible, would be in this ineligible cost.
Whatever the distance from where it ends today to the property line would be. Not both of them.
Not both of them, I think. No other questions for Bob? Again, a little bit about our presentation. David? Looking at the cost systems, though.
Well, yeah, I'm thinking, it's always true. Close up, yeah, Bob? Fundamentally, I mean, looking at the collective picture, in your opinion, short of square footage changes and short of contingencies or a lack of use of contingencies, there's not likely to be a significant change in whatever, wherever we go with the new life. Fundamentally, what I'm saying is, the only way to change is either don't use the, or lower, when I say change, can't change, is hold on to all the contingency we can and/or lower square footage. Other than that, it seems pretty much well-fixed. I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but trying to get an agreement.
Yeah, we've reduced it, the, fairly significant enough, 3.5 million dollars that is, those items were the significant eligible for reduction items that we pulled out. The only way to really reduce this much further is to reduce the size of the building. Because you can see you're at $300 square foot around numbers.
Is that an average, or what it is in the state, what you say?
It is.
Actually, I've, I've got a estimate. Look at this, you know, quickly, whatever, to play on for the states that we're at right now.
And really, at this stage, you have to err on the side of, I don't know if you want to say conservative or liberal, but you don't want to err with too low a number. I guess that answers the question, any of the penalties too, because I'm only working on the 85%.
Bob, another question in regards to reimbursement. Jack at the school did an enrollment study, and that's how we came up with the numbers that we were looking for for class enrollment. When does the state, does the state ask for another estimate of enrollment or another study have to be done? At a certain time, is there a timeframe that that has to be done? And that would change the reimbursement as well.
You have to file the enrollment projection with the filing for the school construction grant, which would be June of this year.
Eight years, right? Eight years up?
There's an eight-year window, yeah. That if the enrollment projection were to go up, it would benefit the project.
Right. So we should do another enrollment projection? Pretty soon?
Before June.
Before June?
Yeah.
John, also, any other questions for Bob?
Nothing, Bob, no.
So you checked out with your sources and this comes, this is real life and unreal?
The only thing they've talked over, that's the acquisition of the land. So I didn't have it broken down in 2.2 million and 1.7, but 3.7, I mean, not astronomically, but if they had anything that popped out, all three of them said the land.
Again, without getting into negotiations which took place, you know, in executive session, the appraised value that we had was $2 million. And then after the Richards family looked and saw what it was going to cost them to move their operation off the property, that's how we came up with that number.
But they don't see, also, they didn't see reimbursement for the land if we sell it, so, you know, that's not it. You know, for our piece.
That's correct, yeah. What we sell the old building for is not in this cost estimate. And again, we're sure that that money is not going to be held against us. The town keeps that money that we, that we obtained.
As of today, that's the case.
There's no other discussion about the cost estimate this week, the last time you showed this. And this is what we will, and will we go to the town, Bob, council with?
Other than, some reason, what's his name, we want to make decisions.
Septic.
Unless DEP puts it in the writing.
I mean, and then it might, and then it's, yeah, the bottom side last week.
Scares me.
Yeah.
We're going to push by Bob to keep that higher cost estimate in there, and David Thompson as well, the architect, is saying, keep it in there.
It's a tie, not pushed.
Architect guy.
The architect is recommending.
And I believe this town agrees. You're correct, 100%, I have no faith in DEP demonstrating continuity from year to year.
Well, while we're on that subject, I just wanted to report Wade is not here. But he has a meeting, let's see, I set up a meeting with Michael Hart of the Connecticut DEEP on March 5th is when he meets with him. At their offices in Hartford, that was the earliest that he would commit to having a point. Said the values, let's see, received results from the Septic Tank effluent, and the values were 102 milligrams and 140 milligrams. Said using 120 milligram indicates that wastewater dilution using stormwater infiltration at a reasonable percentage will meet the DEP criteria of 10 milligrams at the point of concern, which is the interval. So that was, that's positive information, right?
Yeah, it is.
Okay. But again, it doesn't really matter, is what you're saying.
Not enough to hang your hat on.
You've done this before.
Okay, we'll talk a little bit about our presentation. You can stay right there, Rob, if you like. You're on the hot seat again.
That's fine.
I just wanted to go over a little bit, I spoke to our architect this evening, and he's pretty excited about the presentation. And we talked over a little bit about how the presentation would go and what order it would be going. One of the things I wanted to mention while Bob is here is that Bob will not be with us for the presentation on the 29th. He has a pretty important commitment that he has to attend to. But we will have a representative there from Gilbane. You know, I spoke with David Thompson a little bit about this, and I spoke to Bob Lynn about this as well. And I think it would be important for the town boards and commissions to hear from Gilbane exactly what their function will be in helping us build a school. I think a lot of people need to be educated on what a construction manager actually does. So I think that's an important part to get across to the committee members at that meeting. And I think the other thing that would be important for them to hear is the experience that Gilbane has and that Gilbane brings to the table in providing us with an accurate estimate. Because I think that's going to be one of the number one questions that we hear is, you know, you know, we started with an estimate of like $52 million, now we're at $64 million. How do we know it's not going to be $75 or whatever million dollars when we finally do the job? And I think that the fact that we're using Gilbane and they have that experience and hopefully they've given us an accurate estimate is going to be, is going to go a long way. So I think that's an important point to get across at that meeting. And I think Bob said the president of Gilbane is going to be there to help us do that. As far as getting into detailed discussions about the cost estimate, I don't know if that's important at that time to get across, but I think our architect can answer some of those questions. Gilbane can answer, the representative from Gilbane will be able to answer some of those questions. But again, we as a committee have been tasked by the town to scrutinize this cost estimate, and that's pretty much where our jobs are and have been. So having said that, as long as everybody's okay with that on the committee. You're free now. Thank you.
Thanks, Manny.
Monday night?
We are going to be Monday night, and that's when we'll have our rehearsal. Your, I'll see you then, your representative from Gilbane will be there at that point.
As well as I.
Good.
Thank you.
So again, does anybody, we'll start with your presentation. Has anybody thought about the presentation, how we want to run it? If anybody has any ideas, they can throw it out there right now, or I'll talk over how I see it going, and you can make changes to it if you'd like.
Well, I thought we got a kind of a outline last week.
We did, yep.
I know we changed a couple of orders or something, I thought, but can you read off of them?
Well, I think the way we would start would be to make an introduction. And I think it's important to go over how we started, how the building was started, and how it got to the point that we're at right now. But it won't be in depth, and it won't be a long discussion, and it will just be running over some of the basic details. I think probably do three or four slides, and I don't think those slides, to, I think...
Hopefully, the Thompson's slides are a little better than they were. Not nothing against it, they just want to clear an effect, they're brave with the last, and we have the thing downstairs.
Well, he didn't say that.
He's going to find it's not, okay.
He said that he thinks we should up some.
Yep, and, um, and David Thompson is going to help with that discussion as well.
Which discussion?
Our cost estimate, I think we want to hit on the cost estimate right off the bat. It's no secret to anybody, but we should go over, uh, the price that we're going to pay and how it relates to the existing Gilbane report that we've been working on. I think we want to hit on somewhat what we went over last week, how it, if, if you deduct some of the tax revenue that we're going to receive.
We want to get the fuzzy math in there.
Might as well get it in there right off the bat. Following that, um, I think Jack has some material that he would like to present, and if Jack wants to talk about it now, yeah.
Why don't you give it to him, and he can tell us how you want to play with it?
Okay.
So, basically, based on our last, um, conversation, or the last meeting, I, Maria and I sat down and, um, looked at it from a, really framed it in two ways. One, to look at it just the advantages of a new, a new building, uh, and, and really focusing on programmatic advantages. And then, um, looking secondarily at functional advantages as they pertain more specifically to the educational end of it, not necessarily from the, um, functional, if you will, for the, for the town. And then we looked at, similarly, adding additional components programmatically for the new site and functional advantages for having a new building on a new site. These are certainly open to some feedback and, you know, tweets in terms of, of language. But essentially, from a new building standpoint, regardless of where it would happen to be, you know, start from scratch, um, we looked at these six or seven bullets from a, a new building standpoint. Clearly, the idea that we start and we round up with really looking at our twenty-first century learning expectations and what a, what a facility would look like accordingly. And the, the essence of the modern aesthetics of it, you know, in terms of being conducive for learning as well as the, the flexible use of space. Uh, advances and, uh, advances the use of technology for both teaching and learning, and really, um, basically, you know, start, again, starting from scratch, you don't have any of the issues that we've been dealing with, with the existing building or even a renovated building with wiring and the infra, the infrastructure technology. Uh, the design enhances professional learning and promotes collaboration among our certified staff, supports recommendations, and again, it starts to get wordy, but the idea that we have really three major, um, documents or organized look at twenty-first century learning for the high school, our high school, the future study, our accreditation process, and then the state's secondary school reform. So, those are the recommendations for which we are speaking, that improve student engagement and learning and application of knowledge. And then just some of the examples of things that are already working or in, in place, our student success plans, the junior portfolio, and our advanced placement and UConn courses. So having a facility designed really to support those kinds, that kind of learning is obviously an advantage. Um, the design also supports and highlights the specialized programs that we have been, um, very progressive with, and are, you know, they're outgrowing our current spaces, our child development, um, our culinary arts, and then even our theater and music program, the idea of the facility would, would really emphasize and highlight that. And then, finally, it would promote the, uh, program integration and reduce isolation with our sciences, our math and math science and engineering and mathematics, the robotics program, um, looking at the way it's been designed with our theater arts and construction, say, or step, excuse me, set design. Uh, and then our, again, looking at programs like our freshman seminars and integration of, of subject areas and stuff. So that's, those are kind of talking points, bullet points for, um, programmatically. From a functional standpoint, we looked at, um, the opportunity to design the, um, library media center or learning commons as a functional hub for all academic programs, and, you know, certainly in the preliminary design for the conceptual designs. It is central to the academic, um, level of the building. All classrooms are, surround that area. The support services, guidance, and, and social works also central to the academic floor. The improvement in energy efficiency, and we can plug in a dollar amount for that if that's appropriate. The idea of, of a, a shorter corridors, improved traffic flow, reduced passing times, so again, um, more time spent learning as opposed to other things, and traveling from one end of the building to the other. And then greater flexibility of core common spaces for multiple uses by students and community. That whole, the whole food service area, cafeteria, as it's associated with gym, theater, and the learning commons. So those are all functional things, not strictly programmatic or academic in nature. Thoughts, comments? On the right track in my way out base? Are you looking at me at my two, uh?
Yeah.
Nebulous?
Yeah, well, not yet. You're either going to laugh or scowl, but I'd love to see it start off with, with a statement to the effect "A new high school would significantly enhance our ability to offer a high school education." You do a great job now, this can make it better, and tell me why. Because I don't speak education language, and I just heard a whole bunch of education language stuff that can be a tad nebulous to one who doesn't fully understand, I mean, black and white. This structure can do this to help us enhance education because that's what we're here to do. And, and I think that would mean a lot to a lot of voters, to specifically hear that. The rest makes perfectly good sense, I couldn't agree more, but to make that the basis for recounting, pardon?
Is opening functional?
Something, just say, you know what, we're trying to make the kids' education even better. And this will enhance our ability to do it because A, B, C, D. I mean, after all, that's what the whole thing's all about, so.
Okay. So, with a, with a statement of that intensity and clarity, it says, do these bullets?
Not above Dave.
Right, it's not above my ability to remember him.
Do these bullet statements, or, or are they clear enough to support that kind of a statement? As, as examples of how we are going to do that? Or do you, or do you need to be, do you need to be more specific?
I think it would be important to highlight the advantages the library media center is going to offer. I mean, we don't really have those, we tried to work on it a little bit with that grant we just got, but I mean, I think that's an important aspect of a new school that the old school can't provide for us right now. As far as the energy savings, I think David and I would like to hit on that probably in our initial, cost estimate or cost analysis.
Okay.
Yeah, we let Bob get out of here without asking him for an upgrade, and we talked to him last week.
Yep. I'd love to, I'm going to talk a little bit about that. I think it would be important also to talk about some of the advantages, um, I mean, the food services that we have downstairs right now. That's an area in the school that we looked at renovating to try and improve that area. I think that's something that the new facility will definitely offer, that the old facility can't offer. And then, I was wondering if, you haven't hit on technology at all, Jack, is there's?
Play and move.
Do we get it? Okay.
So, I guess, if I'm listening to David's thoughts, aside from focusing on an, on an opening statement that may, would not necessarily be directly as a slide, or maybe it would, then the bullets really focus on, um, improve, increase, and/or reduce in terms of, um, the statements. Improve this, increase this, reduce this. Is that what I'm hearing from, is that what I'm hearing for?
No, it wouldn't hurt, yeah, I mean, I'd love to see both. The statement to the effect that this is here for the purpose of enhancing education more than we are in with several of the bullets, I mean, even showing a little something in there about what is the twenty-first century learning expect, what are the expectations for the twenty-first century? And we, we desire to meet those, or?
You've given me five minutes, less than five minutes to speak.
You're good.
You, I mean, for, I mean, and I, and I don't mean to be, you know,
No, I understand, I understand.
But I just, in terms of what you have asked me to do, and, and despite the jesting, the, the concern that, um, you know, my portion of the presentation ultimately for what a new building and a new facility and what we have been trying to do for the last four years at the high school could take an hour.
Well, honestly, frankly, if, if it's gonna take more than five minutes, ten minutes, fifteen minutes, I'm fine with that. The point to this whole thing is education.
I, I don't disagree.
There, there's no secrets in what we've got right here, to my knowledge, and probably most of it's been seen one time or another. But, I think that's got to be beat home.
I, I think that, that the difficulty I have, and, and this is the, um, I think probably the struggle that we all have as we go into, um, this kind of a conversation, particularly with these boards, with the boards that we're presenting to, as the, as the primary audience first, is, um, the, the degree or level that they have listened in or heard to everything that you all have said prior, that we all have been advocating for the last three or four years. And now we've got to, in effect, turn this around and, and give them a thumbnail focus that gives them enough foundation so that they can look at a sixty-four million or sixty-five million dollar price tag and say, "Oh yeah, it's worth it, they're, what they're doing is all good." And, and so I am, you know, I do struggle with how do, how do we do this in a managed amount of time, given that we have spent four years trying to build and, and develop an understanding for what we're doing? And some people have listened, some folks who are sitting here have, you know, certainly are aware, and, and, you know, when we speak of some of these things, they fully get it, they, they get that. But we're, we are also then going to go from an audience that should have that foundation because they've been listening to it for the last four years, to audiences who, who may not have paid any attention at all. And, and so two different kinds of presentations of that form. So, I'm happy to do whatever level that you want me to do. And, and I don't mean to just point at you, at me as a group. And I don't want to be nebulous, I mean, I'm all, I'm, all kidding aside, I don't want to be nebulous. I want to make sure that we are focused on, you know, specific targets. And, you know, the issue around the, the collaboration and coordination around engaging students in that learning process is what is most critical in this new facility. The technology, the learning commons, and the proximity of classrooms to one another are critical to.
You just did it, right there. I mean, did anybody get that on tape? It was beautiful. Yeah, by golly, you did. I bet it's going to be online tomorrow, too. Um, so you can, perfect. I mean, that's it, right there. Not nebulous, straightforward and defined, and that's where we're going, with education, and that's a great thing.
We got it, I'm sure, Jack.
Thanks.
Thanks. And I think that means a lot. I understand your point more than you would know about realizing we're, we're approaching two different audiences here. I'm very surprised in the last five days to encountered a number of people in Clinton that I just ran, don't know, randomly asked, "What do you think of the high school? What high school?" "The proposed potential for a new one?" "Oh, no kidding, where's that from?" Yeah. There are a good number of people have no idea.
Good chance they won't be outvoted either.
Well, I think that's going to be interesting to see, to be honest with you. But I, I understand your point, and I realize one would think Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, P and Z, and anybody else that may be there would be pretty well familiar with it. But a nice, wonderful reminder like you just did in three sentences is great. And we'll check it tomorrow. Thank you.
So, to that, I guess, then, to, um, reasonably, then, looking at, um, even as we go forward with the, uh, programmatic advantage of the new site, looking at maybe the, the functional concepts that I've thrown out are less critical for my concern as they are just thoughts that we want to make sure get stated someplace and stick to the, just the programmatic end of it, and really two or three slides to that, with that focus. With a clear quotable quote at the beginning.
And, and, you know, I have to disagree with Dave a little bit. I don't think we want it to take fifteen minutes, I mean, I, I think the majority of the presentation should be our architect showing what the new school is going to look like. And, you know, if it's anything like what he did prior, he, he took a little over hour to show us linear stuff, so. Yeah, we don't want to steal the stage from him.
No, it hopefully set the stage so that when they're looking at the, the design, the conceptual designs that some of, of what I've introduced in terms of that, that common learning area and the, the classrooms that surround the learning commons and the access to the, to the core space is, becomes really evident. You're not going to see the technology, you're not going to see the, um, you know, some of the, the aesthetic upgrades that are going to be certainly conducive to learning, but, um.
Any other questions for Jack?
To me, safety is another.
Say it again?
To me, safety is another significant functional advantage of the new site. It scares me every time I go through there at seven fifteen in the morning, and I'm going to steal it. You know, there's kids running across the street. It's a tough spot, it's just, that has evolved, no fault of anybody, it's just, just circumstances have changed, and it's a tough place to be.
Following Jack, I'd, I'd like to have the representative from Gilbane can just go over exactly what a construction manager does, what its responsibilities are going to be, and because I think a lot of the committee members really need an education as to what a construction manager is, why we chose a construction manager to do the cost estimates for us, why we chose them to do the facility report, and, uh, why they're the best option for giving us an accurate estimate. And, uh, I think that's pretty much the most important thing they have to do for us that night is to convince, uh, board members that this is an accurate estimate, and it's, and we're going to be able to complete this job on budget. And then, following that, David Thompson, our architect, will make his presentation, and I talked to him tonight. He started work at it, but he feels like he's, uh, he's got a good presentation for us.
Did you, did you bring to Dave's attention that you want to put Gilbane in front of him? Because this is his outline, and he didn't- Because this is his outline, and he didn't have a specific reason for having Gilbane after him.
Well, I think it was because he wanted to give his presentation and have Gilbane explain the cost, and say how much it was gonna cost. And, I mean, it's not a secret what it's gonna cost, and I just thought having Gilbane present before would be the best thing. I think people know what it's gonna cost, now let's see what it's gonna look like. And I spoke to him this evening, and he was okay with that. Yeah. And then, we asked Pete Nye to do a little follow-up or end of the presentation. He's on vacation right now, so we don't know what he's actually planning, but we'll see him Monday night, and then we can make a decision as to whether we wanna end it that way, or if we wanna just end with David Thompson's presentation and then entertain questions at that time.
I think, you know, it'd be good.
You good?
Well, I think maybe he can even give his view from being a teacher at a new school. Plus his money, so...
I thought so, too. I think it might be important to ask...
But he's got a little passion for either way, you know, he just wants what's best, I think.
I agree. Any other thoughts?
We could have Dennis somewhere.
Dennis is gonna be in Florida. Dennis won't be with us, I think Dennis is gonna be down there for like three weeks.
He's real...
And he's house-sitting or doing something for somebody down there. He's gonna be away for a while.
Could we do a remote? Skype? Demonstrate the advanced technology?
I mean, Dennis' Skype.
Yeah, that's a good idea. I might need somebody to...
That's all I have for the season, guys. If somebody else has anything else to discuss, any other recommendations for us?
I wanna hear what your take is on what you're gonna say. I agree with his take, what you're gonna say, but I wanna hear your take, what you're gonna say.
I don't know this, he tells me what I'm gonna say. I never know what I'm gonna say from him. I'm afraid.
You've got two minutes.
Yeah. Try and be candid here. I mean, you know what, it's a big chunk of money, we all know it's a big chunk of money, and there's a lot to think about to make a really intelligent decision. I think we have to look at not just this year, next year, and five years down, or we have to look at 20 years down, sorry. And we have to make a realistic assessment of what we'll save in as much as, we're not dumping into what is already a building with tough circumstances, let's say, and difficult to do. And where the advantage is short-term or long-term, I think we really have to look at that. And I think that's the responsibility of the main... No, it's not ours, it's the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance primarily. That is their responsibility to look and be able to look, can't point at each other. I think that's as important as anything like this, to some of the numbers. And it changes a great deal, and I suppose we have to try and come up with some numbers, at least conservative guesses, what potentially the existing school property could yield from year to year to year in improving the grandeur. That's huge, too, because we've gotta try and take some of this load off taxpayers' backs.
Is anybody gonna address remodeling of the school and that stuff, why we, are you gonna do that here?
I think that's gotta be part of the discussion is, or why, what we looked at, what that cost analysis was in the Gilbane report, still holds true for the new and up-to-date cost estimate that we have right now. And I think that's how we have to look at it, is what it's gonna cost us, what the town's gonna have to spend over the next 20 years, because that's how long we're gonna be bonding this new school for. How much would it cost us?
Say, was, you know, remodeled to new or whatever it's called, you know?
Renovate?
Renovate to new?
Yep. I mean, we still have those numbers in there, and I think if you look at them...
Well, I think those have to be, some of, I don't know, school, but some of them.
I think we can do that.
Have you asked, I mean, and I know you've probed a little bit with, given the original, those original estimates, because I think the two things that are a concern to me is that if you look at any of the renovate possibilities, there really are only two of those renovations, I think two, no, there are three, that have, that are even close to being viable space-wise. You know, without losing classroom, the number of classroom areas that we need. And to take those comparable prices and add whatever contingencies or escalation costs alone, just to look at those, or, you know, it seems like that would be the, at least a relevant, reasonable way to up the ante. And what I haven't felt comfortable with, that I have an answer for, is what, in the current cost estimates, what are the contingencies that are built in here that were not part of that original, those original studies, in terms of the, you know, or even portions, the proportionate amount of those that need to be escalated to be added into those numbers? Because I think the key question from, you know, that I continue to get with regard to the renovate is, you know, if you do, can you compare apples to apples? And the difficulty is, is that the nature of the existing space is so not apples to a new apples building, that you really can't do a straight comparison. The square footage that you would be required to renovate in that existing building, forget the long-term advantage of taxes and such, are, is such that, and I don't know what that number is, but it doesn't make sense. The reimbursement piece is gonna be at a lower rate, there's gonna be more ineligible costs, because you're gonna have to renovate more of that square footage just to have enough classroom space to be able to manage the current enrollments that are projected at this point. So that number, that, those numbers are really important, I think, and that if we compare the current 45 million or 44 million town cost share to what the renovate of, you know, and even worst-case scenario, take and renovate the whole building, you know, back that 14 months was something in the neighborhood of 37 million, I think.
That was 37 million?
Was gonna be our cost share for total renovation. So, and you're gonna be damn close, darn close, to that level of renovation if you're gonna be able to have the space that you need for 600 kids.
And then you build in cost escalations, which weren't in those contingencies.
So that 3.7 million is, it's not gonna be too far off 44, 45, or more in the end. So those numbers, I think, do tell a story, and then when you talk, when you tack on that, sale of the existing property as not hurting anybody, it actually can then be used to offset those costs upfront, and you have a long-term revenue in both taxes. I mean, those are key, in my mind, to being able to demonstrate how we can truly, why this $65 million product really makes sense.
I agree, and I think if you look at all of the renovation options that we looked at before, even if you grant that the prices are accurate, okay, which, again, I have a question whether they are or not, but even if they are, you're looking at renovate down to 115,000 square feet, which was the allowable square footage, which, again, we could, that's not gonna be enough space for a school, we've already determined after doing this study of the facility, we're gonna need 135,000 square feet. That one is $20 million town share. But again, it's a school that would not be useful to us. The next one that you look at is renovate completely as new, and that does give you a town share of $37 million. Now, I mean, you're below that, if you come down to 45 million, you know, after the state reimbursement, and then you figure $40 million, or, I'm sorry, $5 million for the purchase price of the land, you know, that gets you down to almost that same price already. And then that doesn't take into consideration at all any of the tax revenue that the town's gonna derive over the next 20 years from that property. And again, my little estimate, by fuzzy math, that was almost $10 million over 20 years.
And that's without really adding any contingencies or escalation costs?
Any escalation costs to that tax. You know, and then it doesn't take into account putting on a new roof of that school. It doesn't take into account in 20 years from now, putting another new roof on that new school. So there's a lot of, and then all the renovations. That's the other one. The other one that we looked at was 135,000 square feet, so demolishing part of the building and getting down to 135,000 square feet, which is what we're looking at for a new school right now. The problem with that is, is that 135,000 square feet is not gonna give us enough classroom space after you renovate. Again, and these were, these were over a six-month period discussions that we went over back in the early process of this building committee. And if you look at that, you're at $26 million town share. And again, that's pretty close to where we're gonna be at after deducting the amount that we'll get out of the land. And then the other one was renovate like it was some down to 125,000 square feet. And again, that's not gonna work, it's too small. And then the other one was down to 115,000 square feet, renovate is now.
I guess the...
I mean, it doesn't work even now.
Right. The problem is, is that, you know, we continue to hear from folks, now that we have this new number, that, you know, well, you gotta, you gotta go back and look at renovate. And it's just not a viable option.
It doesn't work.
And, you know, you all know it, and have lived it at this point, but there are a lot of folks out there who are, you know, just as David indicated, are just coming to the table, and, you know, talking about high school, really? Clear. And how, you know, again, maybe not so much for this first presentation, but for the other audiences, we're gonna have to make sure that people understand that. And not to be disparaging to the taxpayers' group, but, I mean, realistically, you know, as much as Kurt has been involved in this process of late, I mean, there's a lot of work that was done prior that is the foundation for why we are looking at a new school in the first place. And it was well-conceived, well-thought-out, and we're now at a point where, you know, we can't go back and reinvent all of that stuff all over again, and yet we have to have some, as Jerry has just done, relative comparison to what that means, and with the best numbers that we have going forward.
So, anyway, I think David and I have to include part of that in our presentation.
I actually have a couple commercial letters today about something else, but I happened to ask them, can you, because I told them about the, you know, they're not away from around here. I mean, they know the area, but they're not... And I go, "Really? That might go up?" And I said, "Well, can you give me an estimate?" So they're working on that, what they think.
That'd be very helpful.
You know, and, because they represent, you know, you know, all kinds of chains, all, they could... Anything from grocery stores to, you know, Costco, State, you name it. So they're gonna put some numbers together, hopefully I told them sooner or later. They had a firm...
That would be good. I mean, right now, all we have to go by is the appraisal that we have on the land, which was done by a licensed appraiser, and that was about $0.5 million. But again, that's as-is, and it doesn't involve demolishing a building. And then Willie talked about, a realtor came in and wanted us to list the property with that realtor, so the realtor said he wanted to list it, $5 million. So that's what we're going on right now. So that would be very helpful if you could get some opinions as to what that property would be worth. And again, unfortunately, it's very premature, because you're not gonna be looking at doing anything.
Right. I kinda expect at least the real situation.
For three years, yeah.
They can at least come back with something.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe it's part of the sale, they can compute some relocation costs as well.
Actually, I had a discussion with somebody that day, it's kinda interesting what some of the potentials might be for a very large corporation interested in something. There's some unique benefits there.
So, does that answer your questions? Me and David have to do some more in the next two or three days.
Yes, three days. Good. Not tonight, though, right?
No, we're done. Any other questions? Our next meeting will be Monday. We're gonna be down in Green Room, and we'll do sort of like a dress rehearsal, so...
Seven, yeah?
Seven, yeah. Bring your critiquing heads, and it'll be a system and eberts, and then tell us whether you like it or not, thumbs up or thumbs down. And then we have about a day in between to make any changes that we have to make, and then we present to the boards on Wednesday night. Sorry, if any of you want to, I'll entertain a motion till we get it. It's the first day.
Yes.
John made the motion. All right, second one, he's got a jabber. All in favor? Thank you, guys.